This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order if you could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing no public comment, can I get a verification that posted the agenda, please?
Tara Adams for the record. The agenda was posted on the 13th day of November 2025 between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. at all the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you. This will be a revised agenda with the removal of Old Business 9A. Can I get a motion to approve that as revised?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as revised.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 6A, consideration possible action approval of the minutes of the meeting held on September 4th, 2025. A motion for those minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find that staff shortages in the clerk treasurer's office have caused a delay in the completion of the minutes and wish to approve the minutes of the meeting held on September the 4th, 2025 as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Our first appointment, 7A, consider update on current activities, plans, or actions related to the Bureau of Land Management, Carson City District. We have Jake and Mark here. The floor is all yours whenever you guys are ready.
Mark Mazza, Bureau of Land Management.
Zach Reichel, Bureau of Land Management, Stillwater Field Manager. Well, we're back. So, obviously, we are going to have some updates. As you might have been aware, we continue to staff the office and continue to make, move momentum with priority projects under the administration during the lapses in appropriations. So, we have some updates, but probably not as many as we would normally have. And so, we're here to present that to you. So, it might be rather short. As far as the Sand Canyon Road realignment, obviously with the lapse in appropriations and the fact that some of our county parts in the Navy were not available for meetings and maybe some of our staff weren't as well, we ended up having to, we'll have to reschedule the previously planned meeting for sometime in December to discuss, you know, the options moving forward with that, as we had previously discussed, between the Navy, the various different rights and ways or ways that we can go about moving forward with that so that we can get the realignment done. We will discuss bullet points 2 and 4 under the grazing section pertaining to the B-16 grazing allotments, B-17 grazing allotments. As far as that's concerned, those are the only updates we really have. Again, we still need to set up a meeting with Churchill County to discuss the Section 2, 2908 checkerboard resolution so that we can try and get together. The plan was finalized by the State Director and we just need to figure out how we're going to implement and work with the county to implement their priorities and their recommendations to that plan. So, how we can move forward with that. So, again, just a part of the lapse of appropriations. We're going to have to reschedule that and move forward with that. So, I'll turn it over to Mark for grazing and range management.
Yeah, so the prescribed grazing project is a project that we've been working on a lot the last few months. Currently, there are cattle out there, so the project's been authorized. We had specialists out there yesterday doing some monitoring and they saw that cattle were using cheat grass, they were using the high flammable fuel load annual grass and grazing that. So, looks like it's working pretty well. Our focus for the renewals right now is still on the NDAA allotments, specifically the B-16 permits. So, in October, we sent out the two new permits with the reduced acreages due to the B-16 withdrawal. We haven't returned those or gotten those back signed yet, but there's also no cattle that have been turned out yet. So, we're just waiting and looking forward to the next meeting with you all and the permittees and discussing the next steps there. We did send out to Churchill County and to Mineral County and other interested parties a letter regarding some allotments down in Mineral County that we're reviewing and looking for permitting. It's the Basalt, Belleville, Little Huntune, and McBride Flat allotments. So, you should have received that. And it's called an early engagement letter is what we're terming that.
And that's with regards to the standards determination?
Yes. Okay, for the sage grouse project, so that's still on track. They're planning to issue that in December 2025. There will be, you know, a lot of new best management practices in different habitat areas regarding each land use that BLM authorizes. And that is coming pretty soon. And they've been working on that for a while, so it'll be good to wrap that one up and learn what some of those new NEPA rules are going to be. There's not really any updates regarding the Wild Horse and Burrow Program. As you all know, we did the LaHuntin Gather EA last fiscal year and we're waiting on the fiscal year '26 gather schedule to see if that's going to be on there. We did have that horse adoption event in October. And right now, we're doing some planning for census flights that are going to happen in the spring, early summer. Other than that, not too much going on with the Wild Horse and Burrow Program. So, for our geothermal projects, for our ongoing projects, I guess I should say before I get to the next slide. So, we did reply and give that baseline requirements document over to ORMAT for Dixie Meadows. We're going to schedule some recurring meetings now that Fish and Wildlife Service is back on and BLM has provided those and figure out what the next steps there are going to be. There's not really any change with Diamond Flat Resource Confirmation that was approved in June. But the big one is our lease sale. So, our lease sale was held on October 21st and all of the parcels in Carson City District sold. There were two in Churchill County. They sold for $6 and $8 per acre. However, they were bigger than some of the other parcels in our district. So, it totaled 3,795 acres. This was statewide, I think, our biggest lease sale that we've had so far with 86 parcels and approximately nine and a half million. So, there is revenue tied to that that will be broken out through the lease sales, rent, which is the fees they pay prior to production, and then afterwards with the royalties in production. And that's a breakout of 25% going to the county, 50% going to the state, and 25% going to the federal treasury. And so, I want to make that clear that there's going to be some payment regarding those ones that sold in Churchill County.
So, with the minerals projects, there isn't a whole lot to update here other than the first brittle cosmolytium exploration. They submitted a plan of operations to us in October. That plan was reviewed. Comments were sent back. They just recently, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, then responded with their revised plan of operations. And we are moving forward with reviewing that and will soon get into the NEPA process and determine the appropriate level of NEPA with that and move forward with that project as well. Lands in Realty, again, we'll go to Edwards Creek, War Canyon right away. EA, that has not made any progress. We're still waiting on engineered drawings and more specific plans on that project from the proponent. But there hasn't been any movement on that. We haven't received those. Green Link North, the, I believe that someone from the State Office has been meeting with you, Brian, has been meeting with you. But the update on that is that we did receive some protests during the protest period on the Green Link North project. This is a transmission line that goes through a number of different counties in the state. We've received protests with our decision on that from Lander County, Center for Biological Diversity, and Basin and Range Watch. Those were submitted in June to our Headquarters Department. And so, all of those protest resolutions go to our Headquarters in Washington, DC. They have a team that goes through it and figures out how to respond to those. So, there was obviously a lag during the lapse in appropriations. Those people are now engaging with that and will attempt to resolve those protests that they received. And there was also a protest that was received by the Forest Service at the Humboldt-Tayobi National Forest from the Center of Biological Diversity. So, that's the update on Green Link North.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Okay, thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
7B, consideration of possible action, ratification of agreement between the State and Nevada Department of Health and Human Services and Churchill County Social Services to enhance public awareness through an intensive marketing campaign on child abuse prevention and connect local families with local support in the amount of 125,000. Shannon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. As stated in the agenda item, we were approached by Division of Child and Family Services to partner to develop this campaign. It kind of models what we did with Central Nevada Health District in making sure that we have a united voice. This one is around child abuse prevention and education. And so, this is just accepting those funds. And it's a direct contract with KPS 3 that actually was signed with the State of Nevada. It's kind of a pass-through. So, if there's any questions, I can answer.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Any questions or comments? Any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and ratify the grant agreement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 7C, consideration of possible action, ratification of agreement with the State and Nevada Department of Health and Human Services and Churchill County Social Services to provide in-home services through the Homemaker Program in the amount of 119,601.36. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. Currently, we have 62 participants that are in our Homemaker Program. The goal really is to make sure that their home stays safe and clean for those that cannot do it themselves. So, we have been awarded the total amount requested. This also provides for us to be able to do yard cleanups. We have been unsuccessful for the last year in obtaining a contractor for that. So, as noted in here, we will go back out early spring and put out an RFP to try to get someone to come out and do those cleanups. And that would help expend these funds and serve those in need. Any questions, I can answer.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve and ratify the grant agreement as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 7D, consideration of possible action, ratification of agreement between the State and Nevada Department of Transportation and Churchill County Social Services for the Federal Transit Administration Programs 5311 and 5339 for the Churchill Area Regional Transportation, CART, in the sum of 579,287, and authorize the purchase of one transportation bus per the scope of work. Shannon?
For the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So, this is really the Churchill Area Regional Transportation Grants that we applied for. They were awarded as requested. We have fully executed these, so that's why it is a ratification. The funds that we requested was at 100%. As you can see within the agenda report, it shows the match requirements. We are funded for operating, program administration, capital maintenance, and then that capital vehicle. Each one has a different percent, but this was included in the budget when it was submitted for fiscal year '26. Any questions?
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the grants presented and to authorize the Director of Social Services to purchase the transit bus per the scope of work.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 7E, consideration of possible action, presentation of Medicaid mapping project by Brooke Page from CSH. And I believe she's online, correct?
Hi.
Hi, Brooke. Whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and start.
Great. Thank you all so much. I will share my screen. Okay, can you all see that? Okay, so good afternoon, Chair, EDO commissioners, and staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Brooke Page, a Nevada native, and managing director for CSH. My background spans in nonprofit leadership, and I'm excited about the opportunity to talk about the great work that we, as CSH, partnered with Churchill County to assess a Medicaid business case in the community. Just some background for those who may not be aware of CSH, the Corporation for Supportive Housing. We believe that every Nevadan deserves a safe and stable place to support them in their housing needs and resources and wraparound services. We've worked in partnership with Churchill County to assess the Medicaid needs of the community. And CSH has subject matter experts that work in the space of Medicaid to help maximize this important benefit, to provide wraparound services for community members who qualify for this resource in order to assess the likelihood of Churchill County assessing the viability of becoming a Medicaid billable county entity. So, today, I'm just going to go over kind of the purpose of the Medicaid business case, the process that we did in the community, what the two documents that we've developed, which are part of your supporting documentation today, the difference between the Medicaid crosswalk, the Medicaid business case, and then some considerations for a path forward for you all to consider. So, Churchill County, again, partnered with CSH to assess the feasibility of becoming a Medicaid billable entity. The business case, it helps Churchill County identify how Medicaid can fund specific supportive services, reducing the local cost that the county is currently maybe leveraging County General Fund to leverage federal dollars from Medicaid to provide these same similar services and improve outcomes for Churchill County residents. So, some key focus areas for the analysis, we ended up focusing on two services that we'll talk about today, one of which is non-emergency medical transportation, which is critical for rural residents accessing care as well as juvenile justice targeted case management, which supports youth transitioning from systems into stability. The goal of this business case, again, was identifying the position of Medicaid and assessing if it could be a viable funding source for the county to consider. So, we started this process back in May and June of 2024. We took some time to first do our homework and our research with the Nevada State Medicaid Plan and understand the state plan amendment around what services the state currently has approved in order to kind of understand what types of services are service potential for the county to consider. This included examining the state Medicaid Plan, having conversations with the state Medicaid Office, and then also just kind of doing some waiver authorization research to kind of understand, you know, where are the potentials for shifts or changes in the existing business practices of Churchill County. The objective was to understand the scope and the limitations of the state's Medicaid services, the covered population that are covered by the state, and to identify potential areas for alignment and services provided by Churchill County. Once we did that research, the service system analysis is kind of what we did next. We came in and we interviewed significant amount of departments at Churchill County and helped to really identify and understand what are the actual current activities that are provided in the community. We talked to department heads, service providers, direct services, and supervisors. We developed a guide to help aid us in capturing very specific data around the types of services that are being provided, how frequent those services are being provided, how they're funded, and really wanted to get to the granular detail in order for us to identify if that service is similarly situated with the state plan amendment. Support was provided to ensure accurate and comprehensive completion of all questions by relevant personnel. We did a lot of follow-up calls, a lot of just, you know, making sure that we were clear about the types of services that were offered. And then, once we ended up gathering that intel about understanding the service provision, we then shift to the crosswalk. And so, we're going to get into that today. I'm going to go into some detail about what is the crosswalk and then how did that lead to the Medicaid business case and our next steps. So, the crosswalk. The crosswalk is an important document. And this document, if you have a chance to review it, it provides the initial phase of our work and kind of summarizes the process that we took. In there, you will find the survey questions that we asked staff and the methodology in which we took to gather the intel about the services that are provided at various different departments within Churchill County. This was intended to streamline the work. And what was important through this exercise is we really wanted to understand, like, what are the types of services that would be ready to become Medicaid billable as quickly as possible? And so, the crosswalk kind of gave us that opportunity to do that. Since many services offered by Churchill County are Medicaid billable, it's essential to gather data on the individuals that are being served and their status within the state Medicaid program. And so, we needed to really get to some more granular detail because we knew that there was a lot of great services being provided by the county. But we wanted to know how many of the folks that are receiving these services, how many of those folks are currently Medicaid eligible? How many of them could be eligible if they went through the process? And how many of them are not? Because that would really kind of give us an understanding of our reimbursement opportunities and, you know, kind of understand the universe of how many folks we could actually be billing Medicaid for these types of services. So, we started in June of 2025 with an exercise where the county did a very thorough pilot initiative. And we piloted two different departments at the county with juvenile justice and the transportation services. And each of those departments had a spreadsheet that they tracked every single person for a month and documented how many people received those services. And also took the time to understand who were those individuals that received those services? Were they Medicaid eligible? What was their eligibility status? What was their population type? Were they older adults? Are they juveniles? What were their age ranges? And kind of understanding, would these folks meet the criteria for Medicaid eligibility? So, that information was really helpful and gave us some intel that really allowed us to hone in on the criteria related to the crosswalk. So, we, with that, we allowed for us to kind of have that understanding. So, here you can see, we've got the service pilot for the Medicaid activation. We've got, at first, we were going to kind of assess Homemaker and attended services because that also was a service that could be Medicaid billable probably right away. But in the interest of time, we ended up just honing in on the juvenile justice department and the transportation services. So, data collected over that eight-week period gave us some information that allowed us to shift and create the business case for this really important argument that we wanted to make for the county and for you all to consider. Is this worth us considering Medicaid as a possible business opportunity for the county? So, the business case document gives some really great information in terms of just the background as to what Medicaid is. There are some great opportunities that are happening in the state right now related to Medicaid. So, the document goes into the expansion of the Medicaid population into rural Nevada with managed care. That is the expanded population that starts in January of 2026. There'll also be some additional services that are being provided. There's also a reentry demonstration waiver that's currently being implemented statewide for juvenile justice populations. And so, leveraging these key opportunities in the state are important factors that we talk about in the business case because we want to connect the dots to why these things could be ripe opportunities for the county to consider. So, here, we kind of outlined those service models related to transportation, and we looked at the billing codes. The billing codes are really important because we need to know how much currently right now is Churchill County paying per ride for a transportation that's non-medical per person? And how much is the reimbursement that Medicaid would reimburse per ride per person? And so, the business case talks about that methodology and how we came up with those figures. And then, for the targeted case management activities for juvenile justice, we also sort of assessed similarly the billing codes for Medicaid and also looked at the staffing patterns that Churchill is currently paying the staffing that are providing assessments, care planning, referral linkages, and monitoring, and kind of compared the two in terms of the reimbursement rates to kind of do some parity around if it was even fiscally worth getting reimbursed for those types of services by Medicaid. And so, we looked at fully loaded labor costs and fringe benefits, supervisory, and quality assurance was a factor that we looked at for cost inputs. Vehicle operations and administrative overhead were things that we considered as well as the eligibility criteria for verified Medicaid enrollment and medical necessity for non-emergency medical transportation. Because the eligibility is really important. We needed to make sure that the folks who would be eligible for these services is at the population that Churchill is currently seeing. Because if those folks aren't eligible, then yes, the services may be something that the county could get reimbursed for. But if there's not a population that's eligible for it, there's no one that we could actually get reimbursed for. So, the eligibility was an important factor that we had to do that, that crosswalk exercise. So, our analysis of the two priority services, transportation and juvenile justice, it provided a clear picture of some financial opportunity. And over the eight-week period, the data showed that Medicaid reimbursements could generate approximately $23,236,000 in additional revenue if all eligible services were billed to Medicaid. And so, this projection does not include the startup costs and operational costs, but it does demonstrate the potential for offsetting local spending. And so, the initial phase also identified the tools and the processes that can be applied to other services, right? Because we're only looking at transportation and juvenile justice. But we know that there's a lot of other services that, once this infrastructure is set up, once the billing entity, once there's an electronic health record and all the infrastructure is in place, those are one-time startup costs that we won't have to incur anymore. But we could also render reimbursements from other services that we recognize in the report could also be billable, not just transportation and the juvenile targeted case management. So, you know, so the break-even point, because we know that the business case projects roughly $150,000 in annual recoverable Medicaid revenue against the defined startup and operational costs with a three-year break-even horizon, and after two and a half to three years, we see like a break-even point if we only continued with those two services of the juvenile justice and the transportation. Plus, we want to make sure that we consider the one-time startup costs and the annual administrative costs that are important to keep this program moving forward. So, in conclusion, we just wanted to, in the report, we talk about these opportunities that, you know, recognizing that there could be some important revenue generating resources that the county could maximize. And there's some infrastructure considerations that the county should consider if wanting to move forward with this type of opportunity. Things such as Medicaid compliance, which is, you know, really important to ensure that when we are billing Medicaid for these types of services, that we are able to get reimbursed for those full resources and that we've got the operational standards that govern Medicaid in place, that we have the staffing training and the resources that staff are equipped to be able to manage the billable criteria. And then, we've got the billable infrastructure in place to bill for these services. And then we've got the billable infrastructure in place to bill for these services. And so staff capacity is important, as well as that electronic health record to manage the workflow that's capable of generating compliant claims. Because we don't want claims to be denied, because once those are denied, then, you know, the process of getting those to cure those issues and then resubmitting them takes time, and it could also impact business processes. And then, you know, because of the expansion of the managed care partnership across the state and the population that will be holding under managed care, with a goal live date, I believe, that's already started or they're moving forward for January 1, these are important considerations because there'll be a subset of folks that are not eligible for managed care. And so having the county be an eligible Medicaid reimbursable entity, you know, to service the population that managed care will not be able to be served, will be an important partnership there to ensure that, you know, there's parity and everyone gets access to, you know, similar services or access to, you know, an important array of services. And then the data governance, you know, having reliable foundation for cross-department billing, having opportunities to peer share and oversight and ensuring that, you know, that there's compliance across the county will be important for the county to consider moving forward. So we outline all of this in the business case report and provide some recommendations. So this was just intended to be a lightning speed overview of that really important work that took about a year and a half. But I will take a pause to see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Brooke. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Do you have anything you wanted to add, Shannon?
For the record, Shannon, it's Churchill County Social Services. So this project was actually brought to us by previous Director Whitley at DHHS. You know, there's many pockets within counties that bill Medicaid. Usually, you're seeing more with healthcare. And it was, and I, it was an opportunity for us to look at being the first county to be across-the-board Medicaid eligible. Like Brooke outlined, we really looked at juvenile probation. And at that time, we looked at CART. They were under the nonprofit because they were struggling financially. How could this be an opportunity for them? When you look at within other departments, such as social services, the essential side, it's a great opportunity because about 90% of the work done there is eligible activity. There is concerns as we look at the federal climate and with Medicaid and what will be reduced and what the state is going to do and amendments they're going to make to theirs. Now, we have the Nevada State Health Authority, which left out of DHHS, and they're making many changes. But I just wanted to make sure and paint the picture where this came about and for this work to be done. And I want to thank Lalo, especially in his team. They did a lot with their tracking. They were engaged in this whole process, really to make sure that we would have a case study to bring forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
What other department, will this, could this touch any other departments, sad social services and juvenile probation?
Brooke, would you like to answer, or would you like me to move forward?
I think from our vantage point, we saw an opportunity for this to address multiple departments. There was a lot of opportunity with some retooling, you know, the department that manages the social services, there's a lot of opportunity there to help with, you know, providing case management and services for eligible participants. And we outline all of the various different departments that could benefit from being Medicaid billable and reimbursement with some, with some like tweaks to like a Medicaid waiver or some policy shifts. So we outlined that in the report, but this pilot was specifically targeted for the two departments just for the purposes of a quick transition to Medicaid. But Shannon, if you wanted to add anything to that.
Yes, so just add a little bit more. So if you looked at currently inmate medical is not eligible under Medicaid, they are looking at after juvenile probation rolls out, then for the adult population would be the second phase on that waiver and reentry. So an individual is incarcerated and they're going to be released within 90 days, you can bill up, you can bill up to 90 days of their care and for their release. They also, there's certain things coming out with managed care, such as childcare. So when you look at our care program, possibly there's an opportunity with some tweaks with the program and how that is billed, that some of the after-school care program for individuals have Medicaid. And that's why I said, you know, when you look at the Medicaid climate right now, it is changing every day. We don't know what it's going to look at the federal government, and the state was bringing all these waivers forward. Now we have managed care coming forward, which is also going to offer many, many more opportunities. I truly feel in 90 days, we should have a better idea of what that will look like. I feel like we're just kind of in the middle of the tornado right now, and once that calms down, we need to get approved budgets federally to know. This is a really bad time for us to end this project. Medicaid, if we'd have done this six months ago, I would say we really need to jump in and move forward. Now it's like, let's, I would ask to wait 90 days.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? If not, a motion, please.
Prior to making a motion, it says in the packet there to approve the report as presented, and that's all we're approving today. We're not approving just, and do we need to table any of the?
I'm assuming Shannon would come back with another agenda item at a later time to see if we actually want to pursue this. This is just saying, we got the report. That's it.
Yeah, so we don't need to take any action on the monies or anything like that.
No, if you'd like, I will just calendar it for 90 days to bring it back with an update and any further recommendations.
All right, just want to make that as clear.
Yep. A motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the report as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Jump to 7F, consideration of possible action, notification of a name change from the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Healthcare Financing and Policy to Nevada Health Authority, Nevada Medicaid for an agreement with Churchill County Social Services, which provides the non-federal share for the medical care for individual person within the Medicaid county match program. Shannon?
For the record, Shannon, sorry, that was a mouthful. So as we just mentioned, you had the Nevada Health Authority now is the Medicaid authority. And so we had just entered into our agreement for our Medicaid match program, and they send out this revision. So today, I would need approval for this and for Commissioner Gatto to be able to sign with the new name.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement as presented with you as the signatory.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 7G, consideration of possible action, ratification of agreement between Silver Summit Health Plan and the Churchill County Social Services for collaboration to expand Medicaid education for rural Nevada. Shannon?
And for the record, Shannon, it's Churchill County Social Services. So we were approached by Silver Summit Healthcare as one of our managed cares has kind of launched here in January to partner to help educate Medicaid recipients on the plan benefits. Not so much as to just Silver Summit, but also there's CareSource. So they have provided us $20,000 to help offset those costs with our staffing to provide that education and help with enrollment for Churchill County residents. If there's any questions, I can answer.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions? Any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept and ratify the agreement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 7H, consideration of possible action, ratification of agreement between the Department of Health and Human Services and Churchill County Social Services to provide a dementia support service in the amount of $8,000. Shannon?
For the record, Shannon, it's Churchill County Social Services. We applied for a demonstration project to provide open mind through arts at the Life Center. What this really does is it opens the door for individuals that have been diagnosed with memory loss or dementia to be able to come out and engage in an activity that can help with this disease. Is what happens, we do obtain a project coordinator that gets certified with this program. And then you partner a volunteer one-on-one with the participant. Ultimately, the goal really is to bring more services for individuals with dementia and memory loss and increased socialization and also support their caregivers. So we are working with several different individuals to see how we could start a dementia support group. So when the individual, then they, family member or friend is in actually doing the artwork, we would offer a support group for the caregiver and educate them on how they can get respite care. As you can see, it can be extremely taxing on family members that are, have individuals that are suffering from this. So this is a demonstration. There was three, there was, I guess, 15 people that applied for it, and three individuals were chosen, and we were one of those. One of the things is we were looking at possibly contracting with a project coordinator for this because our position had been open. If it is filled, which we interviewed last week and an offer I hope was made today, we would not need to contract. We would use our internal project coordinator and use that time against the match.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Any questions? Any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve and ratify the agreement as presented and to authorize the director to contract outside services to be delivered if found to be necessary.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. 7I, consideration of possible action, approval of the CART asset transfer to Churchill County. Shannon?
Shannon earns for the record, Churchill County Social Services. So when we transferred the operations of CART from the CART nonprofit to Churchill County, we evaluated all the assets. Really, there was no assets except for the vehicles. These vehicles were purchased through NDOT funding, passed through from FDA, and the match was actually provided by Churchill County. So this is really cleaning that up and bringing those forward. At the time of presentation of this agenda item, it was identified that I was missing two vehicles. So we went back and researched where these two vehicles were. We have found them. They were not on our sheet of transfer because the CART nonprofit had placed them to be disposed of. One truly has not been disposed of, and I have located it. The other one was disposed of, but I believe was identified in an audit not to be properly disposed of. So I thought it was included. So I'm working currently with NDOT, met with them yesterday, to determine how to clean that up, if we need to bring both vehicles back on the list and then to send them to auction or to another Churchill County office or such. So currently, there's two vehicles that are missing off of this asset list that we would look at disposing of just properly.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Any questions or comments? Is there any public comment? If not, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the CART asset transfer to Churchill County.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. We'll jump to J, consideration of possible action, approval of a request from the Haunton Valley Bird Dog Club to continue to use county-owned water in the amount of 200 acre feet on their training grounds, APN number 009-231-15, with a stipulation that the club pays for all associated fees for transferring and using the water, including the cost to the county water consultant to process the water right transfer. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Randy Hines, Public Works Planning and Building. I'll give a little bit of background on this agreement. Back in 2009, the Board of County Commissioners approved a four-year agreement with the club to use 150 acre feet of county-owned water per year. In 2012, the club requested an additional 50 acre feet. The board approved 25 of that 50, which brought the total up to 175 per year. Again, those agreements were good for four years. They came back in 2013, 17, and 2021, requesting to still use the water. I think two of those years, they requested an increase in that. The board decided to stay with the 175 acre feet per year. Excuse me. In 20, or in June of 2025, the club was approved for a special use permit for an outdoor club and game hunting facility at their new location on Fitz Lane. Their agreement ends, I think, in December of this year. So they've come back to request a renewal of that agreement and increase that to 200 acre feet per year. I did like to note that the state engineer's office has asked about the county doing a permanent transfer to the bird club, and with the understanding that no title change, that there'll be no title change, and it could be withdrawn at any time. It's just, every year, they have to do that, that transfer, and they're trying to, they want to make it a permanent transfer, so they'll have to deal with it every year. It's probably too late to do that this year. So if this is approved, we'd look at doing a permanent transfer. If you guys are willing to do that, probably next year, start that next year. So with that, there's members of the bird club here, if you have any questions for them, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If not, a motion, please.
The only question I have is, if we were to make, want to make this permanent, can we just make that today, make that motion that way, and then let staff change it when it's time? Or do we have to bring it back to do that again?
If you move forward with this today and put in your motion that you're acceptable with a permanent transfer from the place of use, then we will do that next year when that time comes up. And then you will not bring it back before this board.
Okay. And then why are they asking for more water?
Again, they've asked for water, I think, two of the last three. They're here to, they're here to answer that question if you'd like to ask them that, so.
For the record, Chip Bunker, Secretary of the Haunton Valley Bird Dog Club. The reason for the added amount is, prior to this, we were using land that the Navy had allowed us to use. They put that back into the RAG lease program. So we actually purchased 200 acres out in Stillwater from the Fish and Wildlife. And so the amount of ground that we're trying to put water on has increased. We were doing about 130, 140 acres over there on that piece, and now it's 200. So that's the reason for the increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Haunton Valley Bird Dog Club to continue the use of county-owned water in the amount of 200 acre feet on their training grounds for, on a permanent basis, with a stipulation that the club pays all associated fees for transferring and using the water, including the cost of the county water consultant to process the water transfer.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Item K, consideration of possible action, approval of the issuance of a notice of award for the New Pass House and Day Center, PWPCH 2025-487, to PEC Contracting and Engineering as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $864,442.94. Either one of you, take it.
For the record, Shannon, it's Churchill County Social Services. Just to kind of open this up, this was a project that we submitted for to really help with our transitional permanent supportive housing. We've been offering this program in Churchill County since about 2001, and we used to rent apartments and houses to put them in. Based on the market, now we find that challenging, fair market rents, the availability to be able to do that. So the opportunity came forward with the Home Means Nevada Initiative funding. And so we did apply and were successful to purchase this apartment complex. And the goal is to have two houses so we can do placement in each one of the rooms. So you're talking about seven rooms to have individuals in. And then we will have a day center, which our homeless services will be offered to do assessment. We're going to offer counseling. There'll be showering facility, laundry facilities, those things of sort. And then we would have one manager's unit, night manager. And so I just wanted to open up because I know this project has been out there for a couple of years and make sure there was no questions on that piece with Randy.
So again, the proposed improvements of the four buildings are in the agenda report. The biggest one is to just bring these up to, you know, current standards, make the lower floors ADA compliant, make the exterior, make the exterior facilities ADA compliant. And if you want to have any other questions on that scope, we can go over that if you wish. We initially went out to bid on September 11th of 2025 with one bid submitted. It was determined that that bid was incomplete. So we decided to go back out to bid on October 16th, and we received two bids. The lowest responsive bidder was from PEC Contracting and Engineering with a total bid of $864,442.92. And I just want to note that this price includes $100,000 contingency for any unforeseen issues that we have during construction.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
What, I got a question. What happens to that? What happens to that contingency if they don't find anything? Do we ever get any contingency funds back?
So I think there was like 900, after the purchase of the buildings, there's X amount of dollars left, right? We, we have a cost of 764,000, we put $100,000 in contingency. If that's not used, Shannon still has to put furniture in the place, get it up, get it ready for the, for the.
So we'll get it back, is what I'm asking.
Maybe I can clarify this a little bit. This is not a lump sum contract, so the only time the contingency would be used, if there was a requirement for a change order, that change order would go through the process and then that would start to eat away at that contingency. If there are no change orders, there's no need to dip into that contingency and it will never be spent. So without it being lump sum, it's not like that money gets laid out there and we don't get to see it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, this, it's part of the 1.7 million grant, right? It's not, we're not approving additional funds, so, yeah. So all the money left over, once you're done, by the time you get it furnished up and services, you'll probably get it all used, so. That's what the purpose is.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If not, a motion please.
Mr. Chair, I move to issue notice of award of the New Pass House and Day Center project to PEC Contracting and Engineering as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $864,442.94 and approve the county manager to execute and contact, contract any change orders for the future.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you Shannon, thank you Randy. L, consideration of possible action approval to move $9,921.93 from the Recorder's Technology Expenditure to the Technology Fund Capital Outlay to proceed with the PAC States cabling project for the Recorder's Office. Tasha?
Thank you. Tasha Hess, recorder for the Record. I come before you today regarding the Recorder's Office rewiring project. We continue to have issues connecting to the internet. We have to unplug our ethernet every couple days to plug it back in to be able to work. Along with the phones, there's like a 10-second delay with a bad connection sign. So PAC States came out and they are going to rewire with CAT 6 wiring and install new ports. I am coming to you today to ask you, we have the money, it's in the tech fund, to ask you to give permission to the Comptroller's Office to move the $9,921.43 from the Recorder expenditure to the Tech Fund Capital Outlay. Can I answer any questions you have?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Any public comment? If none, a motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of $9,921.93 from the account 310-310-59755, Recorder Tech Expenditure to account 310-310-75150, Capital Outlay Tech Fund, which is being done to follow the purchasing procedures policy.
Well, I'm kind of confused about this. Aren't we using tech funds to buy this? Because we don't do transfers as a budgetary thing, which goes before the Department of Taxation, so that's not, that's a budget change for a transfer? So I thought you were just asking to pay for this out of the tech fund, are you not?
It is. She's wanting to move it within the tech fund from the recorder line item to the capital expenditure.
That will be done during budget augmentations. It's not done piecemeal throughout the year, so go ahead and pay for it out of that fund and it will be approved during budget augmentations at the end of the year.
This is in accordance to the purchasing policy that was approved in December 24. And so this is a requirement in there and that's why we, this is something typically we've never done before until this policy.
Okay, that's fine. However, when we do budget augmentations, that's when it'll be actually moved and we'll just bring that before the board then, but go ahead and use those funds. This is approval for the purchase of this because it was unbudgeted.
Well, we had the money, we had the money in her line item, yeah, like I said, we just needed to move it.
When there's a place, setting dollar amount in a budget that hasn't been approved for stuff that's already been approved, that we keep, you know, continuous expenditures or specific item, that is when it needs to come before the board and be approved. And so that's what this is. Just want to clarify that because we don't send budget augmentations every time somebody comes before the board. So that's fine. Just wanted to clarify it.
Do we need a motion on this or no, to move those funds over?
I believe you just approved the expenditure because it was not brought before the board during the budget process. That was the instructions I had given.
Okay, so let's just approve the expenditure of $9,921.93.
Do we attach, we just say we're going to approve the purchase of this contract? We don't need to say words, come around and touch it? It doesn't touch the tech fund? We don't need to say any of that, correct?
You can say that it comes out of the technology fund. This specific account is.
That works for me.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remake a new motion for this item of business, a motion to approve the, a motion to approve a contract with PAC States for the amount of $9,921.93 to be paid from the tech fund.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you both.
Mr. Chair, I just have a clarifying question after that motion was made. If, if this money is in the tech fund, it's just in a different account within the tech fund, is there a requirement for an augmentation if the balance of the tech fund doesn't change, it's just being spent out of one of the different account codes within the tech fund? Or am I misunderstanding that?
During the budget process, there's a transfer, so we can transfer it between line items and that comes before the board at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. That answer it for you?
Yep.
Okay, we'll jump to M, consideration of possible action, application for support of funding for the amount, or for the Fallon Youth Club in the amount of $10,000 with an annual update on activities. Shannon Goodrick with the Fallon Youth Club is here.
Shannon Goodrick for the Record Executive Director, Fallon Youth Club. Thank you all for having us here today. We love it when we get to come talk about all the things that have happened in a year. This has been a great year of celebrations. Twenty years we've been serving children in Churchill County. We started in March of 2005 on our first day with children and in April of '25, this year, we celebrated our one-year opened at the Little Clubhouse. It's been a year of growing and a year of learning. The biggest challenge that we faced was what everybody had kind of warned us about in the process was the staffing of the Little Clubhouse. I'm excited to say that as of July, we've had a very stable staff, staffing there at the Little Clubhouse. Currently, we have an enrollment there of a little over 100 children. We see 74 on average a day. The high days are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We're more in the 90, 90 children area. We are currently moving kids, we are currently moving kids off the waitlist, the final little bit that's been on the waitlist, we're moving them off almost daily at this point. We employ 15 full-time staff, six part-time staff, and we're still able to serve a great number of children from the ages of six weeks. I think our youngest one right now is two months, two months to five years, six years if the parents aren't comfortable moving them to the big club until the end of kindergarten. We transfer over to the Big Clubhouse, that has been, again, I'm going to refer to my notes here. At the Big Club, we're currently employing 12 staff total, five full-time, seven part-time. There, we see 165 different children in the month. At this age, we got ball practices and different things that happen, so we don't see consistently the same kids. So we have 167 kids that show up at least one time during the month. We average somewhere between around 102 kids a day. A high day at the Big Club's 113 kids. We continue our partnerships with Churchill County School District, offering tutoring, academic enrichment activities. So some of the things that we actually do when we're playing are academic-based, but the kids don't know they're learning, they're just having fun. Legos make for great fraction lessons and those kinds of things. So we continue with that along with the grade-specific tutoring. We also work with Churchill County Community Coalition, working on drug prevention activities, just the education piece of that. We work with New Frontiers, they come in and they run a series of life skills based on the different ages of children. Washington Federal Bank actually has a program called Junior Achievement. The junior achievements come in and they actually do civics and financial literacy for children based on their ages and their grades. So every day after school is a very, very busy day. Lots of kids at the Little Clubhouse all day, every day is, is just very, very busy. I have to say again that the support of individuals and businesses and governing bodies like yours are the only reason that we're able to do this at a rate that families, those low to moderate income families can really afford to take part in activities like this. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you Shannon. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for your dedication to this community and your organization's dedication to this community. I don't know where we would be without it. Thank you.
Very well said.
You're welcome. Thank you for the compliment.
Yeah, this is a board I sit on and there are lots of challenges and this money will be well spent.
Is there any public comment? If not, a motion please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the funding in the amount of $10,000 for the Fallon Youth Club for fiscal year 2026.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll jump to our letters received. Did anyone want to pull any of those?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment about letter C. If you have time to read the insert there, there's a lot of history about our country and how NACO came about and the great things that NACO's done for our country.
Okay. Jump to old business, 9A has been removed from this agenda, so we'll jump to 9B, consideration of possible action approval of updated guidelines for the Churchill County Senior Volunteer Program with the annual reimbursement rate approval retroactive to July 1st, 2025. Shannon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So before you is the volunteer mileage, volunteer reimbursement program. This is a program that was brought forward by Churchill County, actually Initiative of Allen called over 20 years ago, it was way before my time. And it was, ran through the senior coalition, which had the Life Center prior. So when we took over this, the Life Center and the operations, we of course also took over this program. It is budgeted through the county manager's budget, through community support, and there's a direct line item. So during the last budget hearing, it came up about this and it was $15,000 that was budgeted and it was being reduced. At that time, the previous county manager contacted me and asked if it was okay for the reduction. At that time, I did not know there was a full budget for this, so I was made aware. Prior, we were paying 40 cents per mile to individuals, seniors in our community that volunteer at nonprofits. The real goal of it is to get these seniors out of their homes, reduce isolation, 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 I can't even speak anymore, I'm done, thank you, and increase socialization, such as at the senior center. We have up to 15 seniors that come in, they volunteer, they help serve meals, they scrape plates, they help in the kitchen. It is great help. The max amount they could receive at prior was $50 per quarter. So when this program was brought to me by the previous county manager, he said, you need to realign it. It needs to make sense for the seniors, this is really not helping them. So that's what I did. I rewrote the program, put in there'd be max of $75 and we would align with the amount that's reimbursed to everyone else in the community. So when you approve it in January, that's the amount that would also go to this program. So we implemented July 1. We submitted all the reimbursements to the Comptroller's Office and I was informed by Comptroller Wyman that I did not have proper authority to do so, that there is this line item there, but I cannot change the program rules. So I am bringing this before you to present the new program that I would like to make retroactive to July 1 because my seniors are very excited that they got this big raise of $25 per quarter. If there's any questions, I can answer.
Okay, with that, any questions or comments from board or staff?
Yeah, I'd just like to add something. Yeah, this has been going on since 2002. We took it over by, from granting agency who was paying for it and then they no longer pay for it. And we started out at 20 cents and it went up to 40 cents because the charitable miles aren't associated with the 70 cents because that is for business miles. Charitable miles are 14 cents per miles according to the IRS. And that's fine, it used to be at 75 cents, I mean $75 for the quarter and then it was reduced down to 50. So that's the history. And as for the line item, it was a placemark because we would just reimburse an actual bank account that was held separately from the senior coalition and we would reimburse them. So it was just put there to see, because you didn't, never knew how many volunteers you were going to. So it was never intended to be spent to the max, to like bring up the dollars. But that's, just so you have history on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Any other questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the new guidelines and the pay structure as presented to retroactive to July the 1st, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you Shannon.
And Shannon, can you relate to your volunteers that we really, the commission and the county really appreciates everything they do also?
I will, sir. This is, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it does help. Well, they do struggle and mileage could make that changes. Some call it their paychecks, which is kind of cool and so thank you so much.
Please relay.
9C, consideration of possible action amendment of the, of the open position for CNHD Administrator/Health Officer, position to increase the pay range to the amount not to exceed $380,000 or $592,800 with benefits. Joe, Shannon, Shannon, Joe.
I put my name on it, I might as well just go ahead here. I'll have Shannon fill in. I assumed that CNHD Board would approve this on November 13th because the agenda report was, was made before that, but the county had been attempting to recruit a CNHD Administrator for quite some time. We have requested that it be a medical doctor to align with some of the needs, as heard earlier today, for jail medical and JPO medical assistance. We had previously posted this position at a, at a lower range and received no applicants. Then I think we posted it again September 9th, again received no applicants. We're requesting to have the authority to update the pay range associated with this position up to a maximum of $380,000 is the base, which with our benefit structure would be $592,800 in a total cost. Again, that is the maximum. We are expecting to, to work on exactly how that pay range will work. The recommended motion is for Social Services Director, Ms. Ernst, our CNHD Administrator at this time, temporary, the Chair of the CNHD Board and myself to work on exactly how that structure will need to be posted, but we all understand that an increase will be needed and that the maximum is being set by you today.
Do you have any, any need to add?
No, just if there's any questions and where I can fill in.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Chair, Chris Pross for the Record. There's going to be a, because of how this is going to align with some of the medical requirements for the jail and JPO, there is going to be a cost to the county as a portion of this. Could you explain that to the board to help them make that decision?
Shannon Ernst, Interim Administrator. Shannon Ernst, Interim Administrator for CNHD. I got to change it up. Um, so when this was proposed with CNHD, it was really looking at making sure to get that health officer, which is expensive and it's a medical doctor. Um, in order to implement the jail piece, the medical piece in the jail and juvenile probation, um, it was agreed that Churchill County or any other entity that wants to engage and have those services in, part of the district, they would pay a portion of this. So when you look at it right now, 68% of this total cost would be of Churchill County's because of the fact Churchill County is the first one this is being developed for. Then it's looking at two other entity, two other counties looking at this. Um, one of the things that with my other hat I look at is the opioid funds. Um, I have received an updated crosswalk of what's been paid from our opioid settlement. There are funds that are available to help support this. Currently, we have Dr. McDonald working on the protocols so that once this administrator doctor is hired, we can implement quickly within the medical system as it's a priority to Churchill County. But at this moment, it would be 68%. I can't give you the exact amount from opioid because I just received those numbers. I apologize.
What's 68%?
68% of the $592,800.
Any other questions or comments from board or staff?
I have a question, eh? So if other counties join, that will go down?
Yes. As counties join, they'll go down. Fees that are collected from, anything that's collected for those, that cost does go down. Um, if this, we went to a Medicaid billable and when you look at it's CNHD, we could actually almost look for the Medicaid piece where they're billing because they're already Medicaid billers. Um, there's some ways that we can bring this down. We just don't know what that is until we implement within the jail system.
So my concern is, is, and I wouldn't know, this suffice what the jail needs? Is this going to meet? I mean, there's certain NRS things that we have to meet.
Absolutely. And this is something I think, and I don't know, this has been conversations that I have not been involved in. It's been, uh, with the civil DA's office.
Because there hasn't been any conversation.
My concern is, is if we have, we hire one doctor and then others join in and then we're going to have to continue to keep supporting and hiring.
So the program-
And then I don't want to deplete what we, we need.
The program, and this is, I know I've spoke to, JPO approached me about this. Um, and it was, because they've been asking for this since we were the Health Department under emergency order. Um, also at that time, I did speak with the sheriff and we did a walkthrough because they were looking at this, how could CNHD help them? Um, it was after the pandemic. I was not a part of those conversations. Um, is what I was brought was the RFP that went out for looking for the medical that is needed. Um, but those are the things that this whole program would align with.
I want to jump back to the, so member counties. The member counties, if they want to utilize the doctor, then they would pay into it, but they don't, not a part of the agreement, they don't have to if they don't want to.
No, this is not part of a public health structure. This was an add-on, something we can do. This is not required by our agreements. Um, what is required by the Central Nevada Agreement with each county is to provide infectious disease investigation, um, your environmental health, public health preparedness. That's what's required. This would be an add-on, such as like family planning. Family planning, um, we are, we receive grant funds, so that's why it is provided to all the communities.
Any other questions or comments from board or staff?
I'm almost confused.
I'm very confused.
So CNHD is trying to hire an administrator. And they're saying they want to raise the salary limit to, to a maximum of $380,000 offer.
Because it will be a medical doctor also.
Okay. And Churchill County, which is us, is wanting to have a medical doctor on staff with the Health District to start new avenues of care that we've tried to go in contract with for the jail or juvenile probation or social services, correct?
Not social services. This is really looking at inmate medical.
Okay. So what the Health District is, how did we get to 68%? That's one question. So what they're saying is, is if we had to pay 68% to achieve that, what portion of that 68% is Churchill County paying to the Health District for their services? In that, is, is that, is there, is our portion inside that 68% for the Health District?
Your portion, no, this is, uh, in addition to what you pay for your annual assessment. It's 68% of the cost of this position is, would be Churchill County's responsibility unless there's other fees that can bring that down. So the agreement was Churchill County, um, as the first one that rolls out, basically the cost to implement this and meet the needs that you're requesting, um, Churchill County would pay. Once this program is launched, if other government entities, um, I don't want to throw out their exact names, there is interest out of two other ones that are needing the same service, then that would bring that cost down of that program. So basically Churchill County is paying to have that program just here. And then if others are there, of course, that cost per service comes down. Um, if we are able to collect fees from reimbursement for Medicaid, say, um, or the opioid, uh, those costs are going to come down.
So I'm still confused. I'm gathering, you know, 68% is 403,000. So the other counties are, they only have to pay, divide up 192,000 in costs?
No. So the 192,000 was the amount that CNHD has already budgeted for the administrator. This additional cost is to bring on, to get the doctor to bring this program to Churchill County specifically first. So it was agreed that all the extra costs that it, to bring on the staffing to make this work would be at the responsibility of Churchill County to pay. And then if others came on, of course, that cost comes down because that three, 300 and whatever you just said, that would be split between all of the people that come to the table. But right now Churchill County is the only one that we're working to try to provide this for. And this has been as part of, it's been a request for years, but it wasn't until I came on as interim administrator in March that they, the Chair actually asked me to look into this. We reeval, when I was evaluating what CNHD looks like, their work structure, and this was included in how could we provide it? In order to do this, basically not just have an administrator, which used to cost us 192,000, we have to have a doctor, a doctor on staff to meet the requirements, um, to provide such medical services. And that's where we first went out at the first level. We did get some applicants. They didn't qualify truly to be able to provide the service. Um, and that's when it went back, that this was what we were going to have to go up to in order for us to get this, to meet that need.
Okay.
And if this is, I, you know, I feel like I'm caught kind of in between something and I, and I'm sorry. If this is something that Churchill County desires not to do, then this is something CNHD needs to know because I have aligned their work schedule, their whole workflow chart and all of the staffing around this model, which you approved those positions back in, my months are all kind of blending together. But those, that new organizational chart was approved with those new positions and aligning that. Um, I would, if this is not something that Churchill wants to go forward with, then I would go back to CNHD through a special meeting and we'd probably look at that work chart of taking this out and this not being an option in the future.
I guess my concern is, is if you're doing, if we're, if we're doing this to get in the direction to get medical for the jail and juvenile, and no discussions have been had with medical or the juvenile or the jail or the sheriff, to see if this model's going to work or can work or how it's going to work, you know? I have a concern there. And then also my other concern is if they're the Health District, in my immediate thinking, wouldn't they have, that would be their responsibility to have this in place? And then Churchill County, like if we wanted a doctor for jail and juvenile, then here's the fee to pay the Health District in addition to that or something. You know, I understand, I guess maybe they're trying to get Churchill County to be the, the gopher and go first and get it started. You know, I don't know, but that's some of my thinking, I guess.
It was Churchill that brought this up during our workshop, this specifically. And another county said we, we would have interest also possibly because they are also having issues. And I can say, and I, and I will go on record saying, these conversations have been happening with the Sheriff's Department since the pandemic. Um, I was involved in those. We mapped, I went over and mapped what they're doing now with nurses that were in the Health Department there. It was after the pandemic. I know that it was Jeff and the civil office. I was no longer included in those. Um, but this was kind of a way to meet the compliance, um, different ones. JPO, I went over and mapped their whole systems during the pandemic. And afterwards, they call me every year, are you, can CNHD do something? I had no involvement really in CNHD since 2023 and then brought back in in 2025 and this is where it's at.
And right there, I think that's a very, the big portion of this is that CNHD, correct me if I'm wrong here, or anyone correct me if I'm wrong, CNHD was always designed to be a standalone entity that Churchill County would no longer have to take care of. That has kind of changed now, and so that's why Shannon has stepped in. And I think we still want to go towards CNHD being its own standalone thing, but we got put in a predicament where Shannon almost just had to step in and take this over. And so now we're here, we have Shannon's eyes back on it, so now it's being brought back up. Okay.
I think the real problem with recruiting a doctor, I don't think is initially the money because $380,000 is like what a surgeon makes. I think it's the part where they want to be a doctor. They don't want to be an administrator of this network of other stuff. So I think that's the real problem. I mean.
It, it was, you know, there was two individuals that were interested and they said they would not take it for the amount we were offering. So that's what was brought back to me by the Chair and, um...
I mean, then you got benefits. What was it, 403? Yeah, I just-
592 altogether, counties technical-
68%.
Yeah, 403. Any other questions or comments from board or staff?
I don't know that I'm comfortable making a decision today.
That's kind of where I'm leaning is I think that we need to kind of take a step back, see if this position would actually meet our-
I'll say it again, my fear is it's going to meet our needs today when it's just us, but then it's going to have to expand when other, one doctor can't handle jails all over the place.
So, and it wouldn't just be, when you look at mapping out the services, it's not just the doctor. So we have, um, nursing staff on that would assist. Um, we looked at potentially, and this afternoon you have my tour, and under CNHD's update was a conversation about this because they are going to have to add probably one to one and a half nurses based on the need in the jail systems, um, across because of what is being requested for the med reviews, the med compliance and those on call. So it's not just, it's one doctor that's doing the oversight of the program and they have requirements to be in the jail systems and the correctionals to review things and then meet with patients on a certain basis. But then you also have nurses that also support, which we have already two on staff.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment and a question. I guess my first question is, do we have to take on other counties? I mean, I know we're talking about reducing the price by doing that, but would we have to so that we don't dilute our service here?
No, I don't think, well, I think that would be a discussion with the CNHD Board. You know, it's, I, I really don't think I can say is what the future of CNHD is going to be. I think you, it would be hard to say they can't have it, but also that price would go up if we had to do more. You know, I think that's a conversation for that board. Really, the CNHD Board has to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you. And then my other comment is, I, I just want to, I want to make the board aware that if we revert away from this and go back to an administrator for CNHD, the county still has a responsibility to fulfill the obligation to the, to the jail and to HBO, to JPO, um, for those medical services. So I think this was an opportunity to see how we could kind of combine that and do them both.
And, yeah, and I, I understand that completely. I'm just, I wonder if we could figure out a way to do it. And I agree with you, I'm not sure, obviously we weren't in the discussions, um, as far as what this looks like on, on paper, you know, what, how does this work? Um, I think a workshop would be, and I don't necessarily, I would just like to see something more.
So the, the purpose of the Health District, once, if we hired this administrator, I mean, the whole department's going to be part of the jail medical, part of the JPO medical. It's just not an individual that's doing the jail medical and the JPO medical, correct?
The clinical services.
So in the, the, the estimates and proposals we've received in the past are close to $1 million for jail medical and, and juvenile probation medical. I understand that.
I, I guess I just want to say that in general, the Health District is completely separate from the jail medical issue. The Health District typically would not have any involvement in inmate care for the jail. The, I think proposal that was put forward some months ago, when the request to have this position recruited as a doctor and then create sort of a sub administrator to do sort of what I think Commissioner Hyde was concerned about was, you know, we don't have our doctor doing just paperwork all day for what we're paying. And to, to really provide that medical expertise. The intention was if we recruit a medical doctor, he would be the licensing authority and the oversight for many of our nursing staff and other staff who could then go into the, the jail and provide these services. And we understand that that's an additional cost. But that may be cheaper than what was already being proposed with our, I think, $750,000 RFP response that we received earlier this year. And it would give us significantly more oversight over that group than we would have with an independent contractor. And so there was the additional benefit that if additional Health District members also wanted that, we wouldn't have to get another doctor. We may need more nursing staff, but the doctor would already be covered. And so that was the intention. I think it sounds like some significant conversation needs to be done. Maybe that wasn't fully clear, but, um, that was the discussion that was had and I, I think the operation that CNHD has been under.
Go, go ahead.
There you go. This is just a point of clarification. Am I, just as a, something sitting on the sideline, is this talking about paying someone almost $600,000 a year? And they will be the administrator for the Health District and provide MD services for the jail at $600,000 a year? And we have one person that will be doing all of that and would agree to it?
So MD for the jail, but also we are required to have a medical doctor on, so doctor-
I'm not asking about requirements. I'm just asking, this is $600,000 to one individual to perform both those functions.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Can I be a doctor? No, I'm sorry.
At that point, I think we all want to be doctor.
When you look at, you know, and this is what came back to me, it's, we have amazing benefit packages. It costs us a fortune, but the individuals that were going to come forward, they don't care about these benefit packages. They care about the money. Um, and we're seeing that a lot with our younger generations also. But that's where I keep saying, you, this is so much, $380,000 plus putting the benefit package on, this takes us to this point. And they said, yes, but you're going to have to pay the $380,000 because nobody cares about the benefit package that you have to provide. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? It's, it's a really hard struggle when you get into government and to offer positions such as this.
Does it have to be government? Why can't it be a contract?
We can go back to a contract, but I mean, the original contracts were 1.1. Then we did another set and it was 700 and something.
I guess my concern, or still concerning is this, this gets the doctor, but there's other moving parts that's going to cost, right? There's moving parts more than just hiring the doctor. You've got nurses that have to go to the jails, right, and juvenile probation. So when you add all those costs, is now is our jail medical really going to cost $600,000 itself, you know? Now we're getting back up north of our number, you know, of like where we were when we got a subcontractor? I just want to, because I, I don't see how the doctor is going to do everything at the jail.
Absolutely not.
So there's going to be additional cost.
Well, we have two nurses on staff, one APR and one nurse RN. And the goal was to utilize the staff that's there because truly they're being underutilized in our communities for infectious disease treatment and things of that sort. So those, currently your assessment already covers that. The whole, you know, when this all happened in March and I was put back in this role for it was supposed to be three months, we were then going to start mapping it out and making sure because that everything within the RFP was covered in this program, correct? That was our goal. We had not hired an administrator, we hadn't gotten to that point. So last week, the board for CNHD approved Dr. McDonald an additional contract to start writing the protocols and mapping the service out so we could make sure every piece was covered with those so that that could come to everybody that wanted to be involved. It was never my intent to write the protocols and do this, and so we have a doctor writing those.
I think I would like to have some more information. I think I would like to have what the overall plan is that you think can work for the jail and for the juvenile probation and include juvenile probation and the sheriff in those discussions to make sure that the plan that Mr. McDonald's making and presenting will work for their facility and then what is the overall cost of that? Because we're going to have to pay that cost, correct? So I mean, is that, is that, I know that that might be outside your scope, but I think that's something the county we have to take in consideration because we can't hire the doctor first. Because if we hire the doctor first, we have to pay what you, what is brought before us to make it work. And now we're sort of in a box.
This is the concern. CNHD either needs to move forward and hire an administrator and doctor or we need to go back to the old way and get an administrator. Because truly the structure, how it is with me being their administrator and running social services and the life center, doesn't work. And so that's where, honestly, if you want to have a workshop and talk through this or what you want to do, I don't think we can wait three, four months to start recruiting. When this came before the board, the new structure with the intent for the jail, all of this, three months ago, we've, we've got to make some movement at CNHD. I'm not trying to be harsh, but it was a three month, three month commitment on my part and here we are. If this is not something that you are interested in, then I will call an emergency meeting with CNHD and we can reevaluate our structure.
And I think that's where we're at now is that we, we're beating this agenda item already. It's dead horse. We need to figure out if this is the route we want to go and if this is the route we want to go, then we need to have Shannon go back, re-toss it so then maybe it's more palatable for us and we can understand it better. Or if we want to re-go way, way back and go back to the RFPs and putting it out and seeing what comes back, which in my opinion is not the route we really need to be going because again, they came back at 1.1 and then 700 and something.
I agree.
And if we can roll this position and utilize CNHD staff to take care of that medical aspect, then I think that's more, at least for me, that's better. But then does it actually, I think it would, but I want, I want actual confirmation that that covers our liability and covers the MD for the jail and for JPO.
That's what I want.
I, I get it.
I don't want to put you on the spot. You're not legal.
I would like to see this come back ASAP, like next meeting. Couldn't that be ready by next meeting?
I mean, well, I think we got to look at.
I just think that all the stakeholders need to be at the table to discuss this.
We got to make sure that.
One of us for sure. Shannon, Lalo, the sheriff, so we're all on the same page.
Agreed.
And you, Joe, don't think you're out of it?
I'll be there. And then I guess my most concern is what's the additional cost besides the doctor that's going to take to make it work and will it work?
Exactly.
That's, that's a huge part for me.
Shannon, you might not know this, but you said a couple and you won't say their names, entities that are kind of interested. What's holding them back?
Yeah, they want to see that it does get started. You know, they, a lot of ideas are thrown out. And it's just like when I went around and did the roundtables with all the commissions to see what did they want to see from CNHD? They have a laundry list of things they would like. They would like us to provide mental health services. That is not public health either. But it can be an option if the county is willing to pay for it.
Was the question asked from all the members to go into an even percentage for this new salary?
No, they knew it would be an additional assessment.
So they weren't even, they weren't even asked if, hey, is that even an option for everybody to pay equal to get to the 592 number, their intake?
No, we didn't throw out numbers. We have not gotten to that point.
And just so you know, Commissioner, the, some of them are commissioners, but many of the CNHD board members are not county commissioners or wouldn't be able to swear for their county independently. And so I think they were waiting to see if this was actually going to happen before they brought it to their board.
Okay, so I think we want to table this until the next agenda item or at Shannon's earliest convenience that she can kind of rework this. Are we in agreeance with that? If so, can I get, or public comment? Okay, motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this motion to a future date at the choosing of staff.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Now that that just happened, I got to make sure I'm not skipping something. Does anyone or any member of the public want to pull anything off the consent agenda items? If none, a motion to approve those, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
A second motion?
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there anything anyone wants to consider for a future agenda item? Okay, we'll move to Commissioner Management Staff Reports. We'll start with you, Commissioner Hyde.
I had a Fallon Youth Club meeting, working through some things there. Looking at doing some more fundraising, so I'll come forward more on that when we figure that out. Thanks.
I had a Carson Water Sec Conservancy District meeting. Really need to change the name of that thing. And that's all I had. Commissioner Blakely?
There was a fire board meeting, but I was absent due to a prior commitment. Alexa said it went well. Museum meeting, went to the Cedar Business Council Breakfast this morning. And that's all I have, other than go support the Green Wave this weekend and Reno for the state championship football game. Starts at 10:00 AM at Mackey Stadium. It's going to be a great game. Or stay in Fallon and watch it at the Fallon Theaters.
There you go.
We'd rather have you in the stands.
Concur.
Sherry?
We're just wrapping up the audit and the employees have been sent out their leave conversions. And we're onto budgets now.
Mr. Mallory? Joe?
I met with our comp study folks this afternoon. There will be some additional questionnaires that they are providing to the county for all staff as well as all department heads that will be coming out as soon as I get them.
Chris?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Linda?
I mean, office is busy, but I am just going to brag again, thanks. I'm happy we are fully staffed, you know, handling all the day-to-day stuff that we need to get done. And then also we'll be get, you know, catching up on the stuff that we haven't been able to get done. So that's all I wanted to say.
Tara? Pam? Tasha?
Yes, the Recorders Office is going to work on rewiring our office, so thank you very much.
Denise?
The Assistors Office is getting ready to close the tax roll and we're working on budget stuff, so thank you.
Randy? Ann? Alexa? Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, if not, we stand adjourned. I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving.